Mr. Alvaro.
Present.
Ms. Dunn.
Present.
Ms. Kaminsky.
Present.
Ms. McSweeney. Ms. O'Grady.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Steele.
Here.
Vice President Gomez.
Here.
President Andrews.
Here. Please rise for the flag suit. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the provision of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Borough Hall and the New Milford Public Library. Notices have been sent to the record and the Twin Borough News. The Board announces that under its longstanding policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings of the Board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the State of New Jersey, members of the public are asked not to speak negatively or in a derogatory manner about any employee of the Board or any student. I seek a motion for approval of the minutes for the September 9 work session, seconded by Joe Steele. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain. One here.
Thank you, Anthony. Motion passes seven zero. I seek a motion to open to the public for items on the agenda, seconded by Anthony Alvaro. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. As outlined in the New Milford Board of Education Bylaw 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Do we have any questions or comments from the public? Then I seek a motion to close to the public. A motion by Paige Ryan, seconded by Laura O'Grady. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Very exciting, we have our new student board representative, Mackenzie Forte, welcome. Mackenzie, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I do.
You don't have to. You have to stay seated.
So, hi everyone, I'm Mackenzie and I'm a sophomore at the high school and I'm super excited to be your Board of Ed Representative for this year. And so I'll be telling you what the student council and student body have been doing. So, so far we have two meetings and we've begun planning an outdoor homecoming dance and it's scheduled to be October 16 in the courtyard. And we've picked out a theme and we'll be unveiling it on social media soon. And I personally am very excited about the theme, so I'm excited for it to be shared soon. And usually the week before the homecoming, there'll be Spirit Week, so that's going to take place October 11 through October 15. And the students are all very excited to have Spirit Week and all those competitions again. And so for each day of Spirit Week, it's going to be like a theme. So the first day is going to be Tourist Day and the students can dress up like tourists on an island. And then the second one is going to be Decades Day. So each grade is assigned in different decades. So the seniors got the seventies, the juniors the nineties, the sophomores got the eighties, and the freshmen the fifties. And then there's a Celebrity Day, which is my personal favorite. And the students can dress up like their favorite celebrity. And then there's Pajama Day, which is another great one. And then our last one is our Class Color Day. And this is going to be on Friday and the seniors get green, the juniors white, the sophomores black, and the freshmen gray. And we all get super decked out wearing these colors to show our school support. And then also on this Friday, we're looking for each class to decorate the doors of their homeroom class for a new tradition to the competition. And also we'll be having the big competition at the end of the week with a bunch of different relay races like potato sack and dances for each grade. And then we're going to tally up all the points throughout the week and those will be a winner. And so everyone's super excited about that, but also we're planning some other things for the new year. So there's going to be a movie night and last year we planned a movie night, but it got canceled due to weather. So we're planning to show Mean Girls sometime in the next few months. And then also we're going to get the school store back again. So we have two great seniors who are going to get restocked snacks and school supplies that everyone can buy. And then we're also planning on an apparel sale before the holidays. And possibly another dance in the winter or fall because a lot of students are expressing interest in having another dance that's maybe a little bit more casual and laid back because we've been missing dances from the past few years. But ultimately, we're just glad to be back and looking forward to doing lots of things to help the students make memories and regain everything that was lost in the past few years. So we're super excited.
Wow. Mackenzie, thank you very much. That was an excellent, very exciting report. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mackenzie?
So proud of you.
Thank you.
Mackenzie, you said the theme for the dance is going to be revealed. When is that going to be revealed?
Yes. They didn't really specify. I know it's coming soon, but definitely before the dance happens, maybe September, October-ish.
Great. And you also mentioned a new tradition with decorating classroom doors. Is there a theme for that?
No, there's not. It's going to be the homeroom. They haven't really decided which homeroom because, but there's going to be one for each grade for the seniors, the juniors, the freshmen, and sophomores. And they're going to decorate, instead of decorating a whole hallway, they thought it would be easier to just pick one door so they could do school spirit colors, really anything they want.
Excited. Thank you for sharing, Paul.
Thank you.
Goodbye, Susan.
Thank you, Mackenzie. It's so nice to have you join us.
Thank you.
I heard wonderful things. I heard, oh, wait till you meet this young lady. She's smart, she's so talented, you're also incredibly charming and well spoken. And that was lovely and well written and we thank you. And we know that you're probably very busy, so we always give you the opportunity to scoot out if you have homework or reading to do. Which we know you always have reading to do. But if you would like to leave at any time you can, and if you'd like to stay, of course, you're welcome.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Anyone else have any questions or comments for Mackenzie? Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Alrighty, at this point, we do have a presentation.
We do.
Who is going to take the lead on that?
I'll introduce the introductions.
Sounds good.
So, welcome, everybody. I wanted, at every regular Board meeting, we'd like to highlight something great that's going on. And I can't think of a better way to start than to highlight the great things that have transpired within our administrative team, our leadership team. And I asked all of the new people and/or people in new roles to join us tonight because I wanted the Board to have a little time to say hello. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Odoxa and ask her to start with your introductions, if you wouldn't mind.
So I'm really excited because we've been talking for the past few months about some of the exciting changes that have taken place within the district and reassignments with existing administrators, beginning the new year in new roles. And also excited to have an opportunity for you to put faces with new names, administrators who are new to the district and joining the team this school year. So first, I'd like to introduce Dr. Carrie Chrisamalis. As we know, Dr. Chrisamalis was the former principal of Berkeley Street Elementary School and began this school year, or the summer prior to the school year, in her new role as Director of Constructivism Learning. Carrie, just want to say good evening.
So good evening, everyone. It is really such an honor to be serving in this role. It is a dream come true. I have to admit, I admit that I am missing all the hugs that I usually get every day, but I get to visit the children and see them and also Gibbs Middle School, I house here in the high school. And it really is joy to be able to see everyone and to see the district with such a wide lens. I'm looking forward to sharing my knowledge and my passion for adult development with both one of the teachers and the staff. And so I'm looking forward to a great year. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Now, I have to be honest, I did not ask any of the administrators to prepare anything to say, but Dr. Chrisamalis is a natural, so you see how she just like slid.
I'm just following him.
You just slid. But actually, Carrie, do we have you on for October? Do we have you on for October?
Yes.
I think so, okay. So actually, Dr. Chrisamalis will be presenting to the full Board in October about constructivism and some of the work that she will be leading, so the Board can have a one-on-one with you a little bit.
Also, not new to the district, but new to their roles this year. We have Mrs. Jessica Torrey, the new principal of Berkeley Street School, formerly our elementary vice principal, and Mr. Timothy Coghlan, the new principal of Berkeley Street Elementary School and our former vice principal of David Eowens Middle School. Welcome to you both.
Well, keep it really brief. But it's hard at the desk, you can't see the big files that you may have. It's such an honor to be here. I've had the opportunity to meet so many of you, and I just can't be outside, so we get across the stuff. It's really an honor to continue to serve this community in this new capacity. And you know, Mr. Coghlan and I, I think we're off to a great start. And we're just looking forward to collaborating and just having a great new year.
I don't know why I have to be called my holy powerful and holy women.
Get used to it.
I know. Most of you, we've met and we know each other for a long time. It is, you know, and I said this over the summer when I was, you know, so gracefully brought into the meeting, so great, yes, I remember. You know, from the basement, it is always a pleasure to see you and it is an absolute honor to be quite a fit here to continue on in my career here. It truly is a special place and it's filled with special families. And I just look forward to all the amazing things that we are going to do as a team at the elementary level. And to that end, we'd also like to introduce the newest member of the elementary team, Ms. Patricia Pollack.
Thank you so much. It's very nice meeting you all and seeing you in person. It's been great two months. This is my first role in administration in the office, and so it's been really exciting. Although, as Carrie said, it's sad, and so being in the classroom and being live, but it's been really nice meeting the community, working with the parents, the teachers, the staff, the administration, and then my dream team, yeah. I look forward to a fabulous year, so it's nice meeting you on. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Delala, you can have the floor.
I'm not too, by the way.
No, no.
But I am very proud tonight because, you know, Mr. Coghlan, he makes me proud every day. I'm so happy for him and I just, you know, having spent the last six years with him and knowing him and loving him and having him move up and move forward in his career, it's just, it's great to see, it's great to see.
Yes, our famous for that.
And that brings me to my next really positive news is introducing our new assistant principal at the middle school, Ms. Nicolette Perna. I can't really stress enough, she has brought expertise to the position already. She is a learner, she is a listener, and I am already learning from her. Which is, you know, one of the things, just the other day, she's like, can I come in and watch you do an observation and then go through the post conference? And I'm like, why didn't I ask that? When I first got here, because that would be fantastic. But it's just the little things like that and it's kind of the experience and actually brings to the position that I just really look forward and it's going to help us move forward tremendously. So, take a look.
Thank you so much. And I guess I'm the new Mr. Pollack. At the middle school. But honestly, it's truly such a pleasure to be here this evening and to be returning to New Milford. So I know many of you already, some of you for the first time, but I like to say that I'm homegrown. I actually started my current education at New Milford. So I've taught at the basement for almost 10 years. And it's truly my pleasure and an honor and really grateful for this opportunity to have been served in the correct capacity and to get to know the middle school. And so far, it's been a great start to the year and getting to know the students and the staff, and Delala. So thank you so much for this opportunity. So thank you.
Hi, Dr. Perrow.
Hi, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the Board for recognizing and supporting the new position of Supervisor of Special Services. And there is no one better to serve this role than Mrs. Heather Goudal. Heather comes to us with clinical, social work experience and also school social work experience. She was a case manager in Duma and some of her students were placed here because of our wonderful special education program that our teachers, residents, and faculty have been delivering. So Heather is very, very familiar with the quality of our programs and the expectations we set for the students. She started to live for us and just dove right in. Was very visible during ESY, getting to know the students, getting to know the staff, the structural assistants. She has global responsibilities, but she's really focusing on our preschool program, which is growing each and every year with more and more diverse needs. And also our 18 to 21 program. So she's an expert at both ends of the spectrum there. And, you know, has just brought such wisdom and insight in such a short amount of time that she's there. So it's an honor to work with her every day and become true partners, one of the relationships that we have.
I guess what I'm starting to say is that we mentioned the fact that I have had the opportunity for the past 13 years to work in the neighborhood district, perhaps to be placed here. And I'm so excited to be part of a school district that I've had such a professional respect for throughout the years. And so I'm very excited to be in this position and thank you all.
How lucky am I to have this team? We have been working together every week consistently, meeting, trying to come to an understanding of each other, of the way things have been, the way things can be, trying to do things as a team collaboratively with consistency across buildings as much as possible. And they really have been incredible as far as bringing their wisdom and insight. We don't have our entire leadership team here tonight, but I consider myself incredibly blessed to be working with these professionals. And I think that the community of New Milford is incredibly blessed to have these ethical, hardworking servant leaders in this district. So I'm the lucky one. Thank you, thank you. And they've all been working so very hard and they all start very early tomorrow morning. And so I would like to, like we gave Mackenzie, an opportunity to depart. Should you need to, we understand. Or you can stay, that's up to you. But thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you all. And you should just continue because that leads us to your report.
Oh.
Good night. Thank you all.
Give them a chance to.
Yeah, of course. Okay. Superintendent of Schools Danielle Shami.
Hello, everybody and everybody at home. You had the opportunity to meet about half, two thirds of my team. I just want to thank the entire administrative team and the full faculty and staff for helping us to just get this year going. You know, when we were here last time, it was shortly after Ida had ravaged the community. And I really wasn't focusing on thanking everybody for the opening of school because I was thanking everybody for what they were doing to support the community during Ida. Been walking buildings and seeing classrooms and seeing teachers immersed in work with their students already. The buildings are beautiful, the classrooms are welcoming. And teachers had to do that minus the day, the day that they were supposed to be getting everything ready. So they really have risen to the occasion. And in addition to just doing the regular work of teachers, meeting the social and emotional needs of our students, post the pandemic year of too many closures and, you know, taking care of each other too. We can't forget about the needs of adults during these times. Lauren and I have had these conversations. There are lots of days when you're just overwhelmed by the nature of what we've all been through and you need to support each other. And the teachers and the administrators have been working to do that. That includes power professionals, our secretarial staff, buildings and grounds of maintenance. And I hope I'm not forgetting anybody. Everyone, okay. So I just want to remind everybody that lunch is available free to all students for the duration of the school year. It's a federal program and it is available to anybody who would like it. We have some fun goings on this month and, yeah, at the end of this month. So we have back-to-school nights, which all will be virtual this year. We want as many people to participate as possible. We want to keep everyone as safe as possible. So teachers will be in their classrooms, but families will be home. I want to remind you that Gibbs is actually tomorrow night. Berkeley is Thursday. DEO is next Tuesday and the high school is Thursday. So your principals will follow up with specific details for, and the teachers will, for how to log into the classrooms and see all that is going on. October celebrates some excitement in the schools. We have a very busy October. We have the Week of Respect, Violence Prevention Week. We have the wonderful Spirit Week at the high school, Substance Abuse Prevention Week, otherwise known as Red Ribbon Week. And all of these activities will be celebrated in an age-appropriate fashion in the different schools. I have established coffee with the superintendent dates for the year. You don't have to write these down because I'll push them out to you. Maybe you just want to write down the first one. So I'm doing them on different days of the week and at different times of the day, of morning, lunch, and evening, because I don't know what everybody's schedule is and all different days. The first one is Friday, October 1st, and it is a lunch chat from 12 to 1. I will send out the flyer to all families. All the dates have a link. You can click on the link and it will take you to the Google Meet. And it's approximately an hour. These are informal conversations, kind of a just-to-get-to-know-you or ask-me-questions. Just-to-get-to-know-you. And it's open to, these in particular are open to parents and community members. I will have separate ones for faculty and for students. They will be separate. Okay, so I've asked the administrators to share good news with me and so they have. The elementary schools are very excited to announce that we'll be taking part in the Bergen County Serial Challenge. And I'm not going to talk about that anymore because somebody else is going to talk about that in a little bit, right? I don't want to stay here. Okay. David Eowens. I'd like to thank the NMEA, which is our association, for organizing tote bag giveaways for the families who were impacted by Ida. And I understand that you had some incredible motivated sixth graders who were helping you to stuff those bags. And I'm going to assume, Ms. Page, maybe you'll talk about it at the end? Can I assume that?
Sure.
Maybe say a little something about your kids or something?
Sure.
All right. When we were walking through the middle school yesterday, I wanted to share, there were some really incredible student-developed bulletin boards that I thought were impressive. One of them was like a little flip story. So on the front was a challenge that this particular famous person faced in his or her life. And it told you what they went through. And then you opened it up and you get to see who that person is. So like, for example, this one person was told that, and I know I'm going to be quoting it incorrectly, that she was not attractive enough, not thin enough, not this enough, not that enough, not talented enough to ever make it in the world of news and that she should quit and, you know, go do something else. And you lift it up and it's a big picture of Oprah Winfrey. And there are pictures, there is a whole bulletin board to inspire students to read and realize that everybody faces challenges. And everybody is told at some point in their life that they can't do something, they're not good enough, they're not tall enough, they're not thin enough, they're not pretty enough, they're not smart enough, or whatever it is, and that you can persevere and overcome. That was one of the bulletin boards I saw. Another one was a 9/11 bulletin board and it was Survivor Tree. And the students, they viewed firsthand accounts of September 11 and they learned about the Survivor Tree. And so what they did, they created their own Survivor Tree. So it's this gorgeous tree, it actually looks like the art department created it, it was so beautiful. I turned to you because you're our teacher. But it looked, it looked like the art department created it. It was this gorgeous tree and every leaf of the tree had another inspirational message of hope and remembrance and survival. And it was really beautiful. Okay, at the high school, we'd like to congratulate Michelle Jo for being chosen to be part of the Bergen County Junior Commission on the Status of Women. Bergen County Junior Commission was established in 2000 to offer young women the opportunity to become involved with women's rights issues. The commission's goal is to promote the expansion of women's rights and available opportunities by studying needs, capabilities, and concerns of women and recommending and reviewing programs and plans affecting the status of women. So Michelle Jo, congratulations to her. New Milford School District is offering students in both David Eowens and New Milford High School the opportunity to have their voices heard. On November 12th, the students who register will be attending the Seeds of Change, challenging bias, prejudice, and stereotypes. It is sponsored by Bergen County Youth Services and the Center for Alcohol and Drug Abuse. And through this training, our school community will continue to grow and realize that if a situation directly impacts one of us, it affects all of us. Registration is required to attend this program on November 12th from the hours of 11:45 to 2:45. And I believe you can see Mrs. Zacker if you are interested. Seniors Katrina Itona and Michelle Jo, Michelle's busy. Have both received letters of commendation for their outstanding performance on the PSAT National Merit Scholar Qualifying Test in 2020. So congratulations to them. Yes. Okay. Just a little bit of update with athletics. Fall senior nights will be scheduled individually within each program as in the past years. Due to the flood, we had to postpone senior night, but we hope to try to get the official senior night one night. And we're going to try to get next fall. But we still do senior nights within each individual sport. I know there might have been some questions on, follow up questions about the field. So there's a few things I just want to share with you because I received some questions. So the track needs to be professionally evaluated before it's cleaned. That's why it hasn't been touched. That's important to know. We can't touch it until it's assessed, evaluated. We have a report before we clean it, okay? I mean, anybody who's ever had any insurance damage in their home knows you don't touch anything until it's evaluated. So we are dealing with that with the track. The main field has passed the G-MAX test. So anytime you have a problem with, and even when you certify turf fields to be used for the very first time, they have to pass a G-MAX test and spring and all this kind of stuff. It was sanitized. We actually paid extra to have it sanitized, even though they assured us that there was no bacteria because it had been tested. We did extra sanitization. And on both fields, both the big fields, both big, and the field right behind the high school. The tennis courts were thoroughly cleaned and they look great. It's important to know that at this moment, we currently do not have working lights on the football field. So this week's game may have to go on the road. We do not know where or when exactly yet. That is to be determined, and more information will follow. We understand that we may have missed a few fish. So there were a few fish on the grass. And we thought we got them all. But we're going to have to go look again. We're sorry. It is near water and sometimes you miss a fish. I'm not, I don't mean to joke, but it's like really, you're out there, you know, searching for fish. We're trying. We're working on that. And we are proud to announce that junior, junior Janet Galavo has been creating videos from various sporting events. Did I say her name right? Janet Galavo. And on the athletic department's website, you can see some of the film that she has created and posted. I don't know if this has been done in the past, but I like to update, some districts do this. I don't know that we've done it here, update enrollment at every meeting or at least every regular meeting. So we have successfully enrolled 2,065 students for the 21-22 school year. We have about five families who are still in need of providing us registration backup or residency documentation. We've been in communication with those families. But the number five is a really good number for this point in the year. So I have to give the office staff, the administrative assistants, kudos for staying on top of that and really following up. It's very important to have all of your information because inadvertently, you need a contact for somebody and you don't have it, and we don't ever want to be in that situation. And our high school graduation rate report was complete for the class of 2021, and it was 98.4%. And I believe that is the end of my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent, lots of excellent and informative news. I'm excited to develop these coffee talks.
Yes.
Coffee talk? Families will enjoy that. Families will enjoy that. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. O'Grady.
The lights on the field, was that connected to the flood situation or is that separated?
Yes. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Mrs. Ryan. Thank you for the follow the wonderful updates. One more question on the field. There's the fencing over by the south end, by the scoreboard. Obviously that, well not obviously, but that got folded over because I think the water rushed back to the river. So how it is now is it's not over that way, but it's kind of in and just, I see children.
You envision.
Crossing over. It's a vision that I have. So there was a game already. There probably are other games being held. Do we have an ability to rope that, just that spot off?
I did bring your concern to the attention of Stephanie and Brian. And they're going to address that.
Great.
And Joe, I felt some.
I did see the other side, and it's understandable that we have to, you know, get things. They don't just happen like that.
Right, we're working on it. But that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you for all of the other information too.
Mrs. Duncan. I mean, thank you for answering those questions. A lot of information. My other question is for the home games, whether it's soccer, football. Being at a game recently, there was a lot of parents that were asking, not directly, but questioning where the porta-johns are. Will those be brought back? I know they were probably washed away.
Well, they won't be brought back.
Not those ones.
Not those ones.
We don't want those ones.
Maybe ones that didn't go where those ones went.
Yes. Yes, yeah.
Because they were, you know, with the visiting teams coming in.
Yes. Porta-johns.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your report. And that leads us to Lauren Adaxa, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us here and at home. It's really good to be back, and it's really good to have everybody back. And as Mrs. Shanley had shared earlier, it's just been so nice to walk through all of the schools and see all of our kids in their classrooms. Just teachers and students buzzing with excitement, those old familiar sounds. And everybody is, for the most part, smiling. So it feels really good and it's been really exciting. Teachers are busy with their beginning of year assessments, working with individual students and small groups of students, listening to kids read, doing running records. All that kind of back to school business that's really important, especially after the last year that we had, so that we can best figure out what our next steps will be moving forward. As previously shared with you, we've expanded and extended the one-to-one initiative so that all of our students have access to district issued Chromebooks this school year. There are many valuable teaching tools and instructional resources that resulted from learning during the pandemic. So we're really excited to be able to continue use of those platforms to enrich the student experience this school year and moving forward. The NM tech department or tech team is busier than ever. I'm sure Mr. Priest would agree with me. Earlier today, Mr. Watson shared that the technology department has fielded 419 support tickets since September 1st. Those tickets range from everything to battery needs on devices and powering up machines. He also shared with me that the average response team for the tickets is three hours, which is incredible. So I want to express my gratitude and give a shout out to the NM tech department for keeping us all connected and moving and grooming as we start into the new school year. So thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about assessment and what that looks like as we return to school. As you know, the New Jersey Department of Education notified us that the administration of the Start Strong Assessment in the fall of this school year will satisfy the federal statewide assessment requirement to administer general assessments in ELA and mathematics and science for the 2020-2021 school year. So because we did not take the NJSLA in the spring, which we typically do every year, there's, they told us that this start, or notified districts that the Start Strong Assessment would fulfill those requirements. The flexibility is only applying to the 2020-2021 school year. It always sounds like a mouthful when we're in the twenties now. The Start Strong Assessments that we will be administering are intentionally brief, designed to maximize instructional time and quickly provide critical data to teachers and school leaders. The assessments provide us the flexibility to address students' unique learning needs at the beginning of the school year. The Start Strong Assessments are based on a subset of prioritized prior year academic standards. So our fifth graders who will be taking the Start Strong Test this fall, assessment this fall, will be tested on fourth grade standards. They're available in English Language Arts, grades four through 10, Mathematics, grades four through eight, Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, and Science in grades six, nine, and 12. Typically in Science, it's five, eight, and 11 that test. But because we're going back to last year's standards, it's the students in six, nine, and 12 who are testing. The nice thing about the assessments, as I have said, they're intentionally brief. They're approximately 45 to 60 minutes in length each. So they're designed to be administered within a single class period. And they provide immediate results to teachers through the assessment platform. So there's really no wait and turnaround time. We'll have that data at our fingertips so that we can do something with it, right? Which is very important when you're, when you're looking at data and thinking about what to do with it. And of course, all of the accessibility features and accommodations that are offered or provided for the NJSLA will hold true for the administration of the Start Strong Assessment. So what does this really mean for families? Following the Start Strong Assessments, parents will have access to an ISR or Individual Score Report for each content area in which their child is tested during the fall assessment period. The ISR provides parents with a sense of your child's understanding in each of the tested content areas, a description of the major concepts that were tested, and a baseline or starting point for conversations with your child's teacher as far as what learning might look like in the next school year. There are three performance levels utilized for these assessments. Strong support may be needed, some support may be needed, and less support may be needed to help both teachers and families make decisions about the types of supports that students can receive in this school year. It's important to note that the Start Strong Assessments are not intended to replace any locally administered assessments. For example, Linkit and AIN Direct, which are the platforms that we use for benchmarking, that will be in addition to. But just like those assessments, they're intentionally brief and designed to only take up a class period so as to maximize the instructional time. Oh, hang on one second. I'm sorry. My Wi-Fi bugged out and I lost my, I lost my place.
Can we take a pause for a second?
Sure.
Should we make a big pause? Should we like do something?
You know what? I can pull it up on my phone.
Okay.
I have my phone on.
Got it on our phone.
I'm pretty connected.
I'll check for Google Talks.
One second.
We have to read resource. Mackenzie, are you enjoying this?
Yeah.
Mackenzie says, "I'm going to have a test." Wow. Yes.
Valuable information. I never meant to overbeep, but I'm getting a lot of good.
There's a lot of. There you go. A lot of good stuff.
Okay, so forgive me. My eyes are not as good. It's a little bit smaller in here, but I can continue.
From the reading glass?
Yeah. No, no, I'm good. So the assessment will be rolling out. We are engaging all of our faculty members in training on September 27. And the window for administering the Start Strong Assessments will run from October 4th through October 22nd. Students will not be testing all of those days. Remember, it's just one class period for each content area. All students, including students with unique abilities, who are not eligible for the Dynamic Learning Maps or DLM assessments, and English Language Learners will be expected to participate in the assessments. Now, looking forward, we are anticipating to administer the NJSLA, which we typically do each spring in ELA and Mathematics and Science. The NJSLA ELA and Math window runs for, from April 25th through June 3rd, and that's for students in grades three through nine. And the NJSLA Science window for students in grades five, eight, and 11 runs from April 25th to June 3rd. Okay, I believe Mrs. Shanley mentioned this last time and also said that I would provide a bit more information on updated high school graduation requirements. There is a lot of information here. I'm going to try to package this for you in a way that is kind of easy to take in. And I'm going to speak specifically tonight to the class requirements for the class of 2020. So New Jersey.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-two. They're so gone.
They're gone.
They're gone.
I know, they're gone.
Twenty twenty-two.
So New Jersey High School Graduation Assessment Requirements for the classes of 22 through 25 were adopted by the New Jersey State Board of Education on September 8, 21. For the class of 2022, the first pathway to graduation is by demonstrating proficiency in the high school end of year, end of course NJSLA assessments in ELA 10 and/or Algebra I.
So that means this year's seniors.
This year's seniors.
If they passed it when they were in grade 10 for ELA and/or Algebra I, could have easily already met that requirement.
Correct.
Very good.
Good. The second pathway is by demonstrating proficiency in ELA and/or Mathematics by meeting the Designative Cut Score on one of the New Jersey Department of Education approved substitute competency tests, such as the PSAT, the SAT, or ACT. There are other approved tests. I am not going to name them all for you this evening, but that information will be shared out to you from your high school. The third pathway is by submitting through a school district or through our district, a student portfolio appeal to the NJDOA. That typically happens when proficiency has not been met on one of the required assessments.
And then you, the parents would know that, and the kids would know that. And they would be partnered with a teacher who would take them through that.
Yes.
So it's not like a surprise. It's not like you have to apply for that on your own or anything like that. Maybe the children, the students would be counseled through that process.
There's a timeline. So a process that needs to be followed and certain steps that need to be followed. And it takes, you know, you would be engaged in that process through the school year with your teacher. Okay. So if all of that doesn't give you anxiety, I want to remind you about our family series, our NM PSD Family Series, which, as previously shared, we partnered with Care Plus to partner with families to help you support your child or children at home. We had our first meeting on September 14th. It was a Tuesday evening. And the topic was reentry anxiety and how to overcome it. There were some really good tips and tricks and little cheat sheets that you can keep on hand. So tell your neighbors, tell your friends, please join us. Information will be coming out. Our next stage is October 20th. And we look forward to seeing you there. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Also lots of good information. I only have one question. The standardized testing in the fall and the standardized testing in the spring, those are both require testing by the state, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. O'Grady.
If I missed this, but you said that we have expanded the one-to-one Chromebook. Does that mean, when you say expanded, does that mean that everybody has one? Does that mean, when you say expanded, does that mean that everybody has one, or which is better?
Well, when I say expanded, last year was kind of different because we needed the Chromebooks, kids were home, so now this is the first year that we're starting with a full day in traditional, what we know as, you know, the traditional school setting, where kids have Chromebooks with them throughout the day. Or access to, I should say, because they're not sending.
It's not there personally, it's just they can get one wherever they are.
No, they're assigned one.
They are assigned, so it's district issue. But I want to be careful to say access to because it's not, you know, the teachers are using them and students are using them as learning tools, but it's not the primary means of delivering instruction.
Great, thank you. Are there other questions or comments?
Yes, Jeff.
Just to piggyback on something Mrs. Shanley said, there were five families or a few more that are struggling?
No. There were five families that hadn't gotten us all of their registration and/or paperwork.
What about people a bit affected by Ida?
I didn't provide a number for that. That was a separate issue. We were talking about the registrations.
Oh, okay. I was saying, there's a townwide garage sale this weekend. If we knew what they needed, we could be on the lookout for it.
I think there is a.
They already had something else.
Yeah, they did.
They had help for people. Maybe it's a no.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. All right, and that leads us to business administrator report, Dr. Stephanie Char.
Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to provide some clarification around, on the agenda, it's P-57 on the work session, it was F-46. So, it was approved as F-46, but because it's regarding staff, that it shouldn't have been P, so the question was asked, and so now we're just revising it. Also, on the agenda, just for the board's knowledge, we're cleaning and trying to close the books for the 2021 school year, and so that's why in September, you'll see two bills lists, two different numbers, because the first set of numbers is for items that could have been received for goods and services that were provided last year, but for whatever reason, we've only gotten them now, so we continue to have two bills lists. So, shifting to the fields and cleanup from Ida. As seen before, there's a large area of fencing. We had some temporary fencing that we utilized to fence off the field house as well as the snack shack. Because that area cannot be accessed right now, we had a company come assess that, the insurance restoration specialist, and it was determined through the walkthrough onsite that there's no elevated concentrations of VOCs, which is volatile organic compounds that were observed inside of the structure. However, because we have fuel and fertilizer, it's not safe. That's where the electric is running into, and that's why we have no field lights. We're estimating about three weeks for cleanup on that. As we get more information, I will provide it. Along there, since, as Miss John, I wasn't going to speak about the porta potties, but they're supposed to be arriving tomorrow.
Yay, porta potties.
Glad I can provide that.
Who knew somebody's happy about that?
Yes. Really exciting, as Ms. Shanley said before, that free lunch is accessible for all students. So, I just wanted to share with you that on Friday, September 10, was our first day of food service, and we served 1,647 meals. The breakdown was 461 meals served at the high school, 367 served at the middle school, 398 at Gibbs, and 421 meals at Berkeley. Since then, we've dropped slightly, but we're still averaging around 1,500 meals a day. So, I just want to really thank Pomptonian for their dedication in providing these meals. It's taken a lot. We're starting to roll out the forms so parents can pre-select the meals at the elementary school levels, which will help aid in the service of food. We've also been working with a dietitian to implement lunch, as I spoke about last meeting, for our preschool students. We're targeting early October so that families have enough time to fill out the form and that meals can be provided. The menu's being developed. This year is a Q-SAC year, so we are preparing, and right now, we're working on the health and safety evaluation of schools, buildings and facilities checklists, ensuring all our buildings are safe and can pass that. And finally, I just want to provide an update on, I guess what we're calling the mobile classroom for our preschool, that our guys internally in our maintenance staff are working on the plumbing and electric. As of today, the plumbing is almost complete, all the outside work is done, the ground has been seeded, everything has been filled. There's a specific water pressure amount that the unit calls for, there's too much water going in, so we had to order a part, that'll be completed tomorrow. So, we just are now waiting on the electric, and then hopefully soon to follow it would be a CO. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Ryan.
Okay, so I'll start with the last name because I was listening. So, the mobile classroom, you said we were waiting for electric and then a CO, so where are the students at this point?
In the building.
So, we're just kind of squeezed.
Yeah, we're using multiple spaces within the building.
Okay. And then, I did write it down. So, you mentioned about the lunches, so I'll ask this now, since you had mentioned it. What happens with the cafeteria account, since all the lunches are free, right, so we're not taking in anything, and I know that there's the agreement and the minimum and all of that with whatever food service it is by law, right, that we cannot, it cannot cost the district anything. So, I know that there's reimbursement there, but what happens with that account? And then, so is that coming to us, and then we're reimbursing Pomptonian? How is that? I don't know how that's working. Because I know we're getting reimbursed from the asset funds, so.
Yeah, it's like.
Okay, that's fine. And then, will we consider offering, like, à la carte or additional at some point in the year? I know at the middle and high school, they're kind of used to doing that.
At some point.
Yeah, so at some point, that's a consideration, too.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure, so I'll ask that. I just thought of that when you were bringing it up. And then, I just wanted to say thank you for continuing to focus on all of those things and everything that we have to do, because on top of just running the district and doing all of that, now all of these other things kind of get thrown in, so just, you know, from a board standpoint, thank you for keeping us up to date on all of that information.
If I could just say, the board and the public might notice a little change to the agenda, and that is the hot links. So, what we're trying to do is, if there's an attachment or enclosure, to link those attachments to the public and to the board before action is taken, and then enclosures are confidential until there's no longer a need for confidentiality, if that happens. So, you will see the links, it'll help you to just click on things and see them instead of having to look through folders, et cetera. So, you'll see that for the first time tonight.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Educational.
I know, I just lost my place again.
Yeah, here we go.
Educational Programs and Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Laura O'Grady.
I seek approval for C-18, C-8, and C-9.
Motion by Anthony Albro, second. Heather.
No, she motioned, he seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see Nicole.
No, no, Laura motioned.
Yes, thank you. Seconded by Anthony Albro. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Personal recommendations. Having the recommendation of the superintendent, I seek a motion for the approval for P-187, P-18, P-45, P-46, P-47, P-48, P-49, P-50, P-51, P-52, P-53, P-54, P-55, P-56, P-57, which was previously F-46, and P-58. May I get a second? Seconded by Kate Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. Nicole, please. Mr. Albro?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Ms. O'Grady?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Vice President Gomez?
Yes.
President Andrews?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Finance Committee, Judith McSwing is not with us. Who is her?
Finance would be Laura.
Laura, would you like to take this one? Don't rush her out.
I seek approval for F-47, F-48, F-49, F-50, F-51, F-52, F-53, F-54, F-55, F-56, F-57, F-58, F-59, F-60, F-61, F-62, and F-62.
May I get a second? Seconded by Joseph Steele. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero.
I just want to make a comment on F-63. That I think it's fantastic that we're able to do that again.
Yes. Facilities Committee, I seek a motion for F-A4. Can I get a second? Seconded by Nicole Dunn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Liaison and Board Committee reports. Mr. Steele.
Okay, last night, I attended virtually a county leadership meeting, and I have a few items. One is for the educators in the room, the audience virtually. The governor has dumped in many, I don't have the exact number, but it was a lot of money into the pension system. It is an election year, so the pension is safe for a few more years. It was set to expire next year, but this year was the judges, and I think fire and police, so everybody is secure for a few years. Okay, that's the first one. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I'll probably continue. Check your hourly credits on school boards. If you have a problem, find me, give me a call, I'll be glad to walk you through it. We should have some members coming up for certified board member this year, some of you have attended. Now, on the 29th, there are conflicts with our county meeting, but if you're not going to anything else that night, the county meeting will be held, the clip-in, I believe. Check with me for updates on that. Also, if you go on the school board, right on the first page, it says county meetings. Please look on that, there's like seven or eight meetings the rest of this month. You can go to Gloucester County's meeting, Salem County, you can go to Monmouth, any one of the county meetings, and you stay the whole time, you'll get credit hours, and the topics usually don't duplicate. So, please do that. That's how I have asked a lot of my hours. I did mine in person, though, but I didn't go to South Jersey, but I did Essex Union, Morris, Hudson, so, you know, it's possible. The workshop, again, is the 26th to the 28th, and it's online, and I believe they're going to keep open these seminars for the whole year again, as they did last year. Let's see. Did that one? Did that, okay. There is a great teacher shortage in New Jersey. There is a great shortage of bus drivers. Whether either one of those is directly impacting us, I'm not sure. Some districts are missing 30 or 40 teachers and almost all their bus drivers where they've consolidated bus routes, then the kids are getting picked up at the crack of dawn and being dropped off, you know, when it's dark. Either one of those are favorable scenarios, so. The CDL test, which is monitored, and I think their rules are federal, so the CDL license includes some mechanical knowledge in case your bus or truck breaks down, so it's very difficult, and they're trying to work out a way to get more CDLs. One of the ways, some towns are using people in their DPW as a shared service, because most of them have a CDL, because there are trucks in town, and it was a way around that, so it was very interesting. Okay, we're looking at, we're trying to get all of Bergen County to attend our first delegate assembly coming up in December, because Bergen County has over 70 districts, so we would have a loud voice there. Again, you can join me at the delegate assembly, go on your own. It's interesting, I had a page read once to the delegate assembly, it's an experience. Okay, county, the county meetings in January and February, whether we're back in person or not, are going to be virtual because of the weather possibilities. Universal pre-K, there are going to be a lot of jobs out there available to people who are in early childhood. Do you know anybody who's taking college courses? I believe, part of it used to be two classes, I don't, because I took them, but it shouldn't be too difficult to get the endorsement for early childhood on a degree, so, you know, it's something to think about. How it's going to impact the schools, say you have a couple daycare centers with pre-K in the town, if the schools are going to pay into that or not, for the kids to go there because they don't have the physical room for the pre-Ks. Facilities is a problem with that. Vaccinations for all educators, daycare, and nursery by November 1, and I believe, that's it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Bring it on, bring it on.
What is the date for the delegate assembly?
I'm sorry?
The date for the delegate assembly?
I could look it up on the school board notes. I believe it's just early December.
I think you might have a couple of us joining you, because our certification, I think we have the hours, but we need to attend, and I know.
Yeah, that one gives you a little bit more.
But the rest of us can attend and observe, so Joe gets a vote, but we'll probably.
If you can't find it on the website, give me a yell.
Thank you.
I just have one question that you may or may not have the answer to, or Danielle, you may or may not know. I've been reading about the universal preschool, but it's happening in the future. Do we, have they given a prediction to when that will happen, or now that's still?
I have not received anything formal from the New Jersey Department of Education on this latest announcement.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I've just still got a lot to announce.
I heard the news, just like everyone else heard the news.
Yep. Credit various sources.
Right.
Joe Steele.
There we go.
All righty. All right, do we have? Thank you. Good night, McConaughey.
Nice job.
Thank you very much. Any other liaison, of course, on the board? We do have, waiting there very patiently, Councilman Seymour, did you have anything for us this evening?
I do, thank you. Once again, thank you for your partnership in our community, and your part of your dedication and everything that you guys do. September 12, the United School Alliance for the Milk herd organized another fantastic and very well-attended fishing derby, which was a lot of fun, well-attended, and a great opportunity for our community to come together. opportunity for our community to come together and have a much-needed day of fun and relaxation. Council president Penny Grant, a few days ago, secured headed an amazing sculpture garden presentation at our library, which featured some incredible sculptures by some amazing artists, which was also well-attended. For those of you who have not yet had an opportunity to go take a look, I highly, I highly recommend that you do so. Insofar as our borough's recovery from Ida, our community has continued to come together. It truly is unity and community, and our volunteers have not stopped for a moment to try to help out at each and every turn. Our community has come together and helped organize an amazing collection of clothing, toys, and other supplies at the Milford Elks Lodge. The Elks were kind enough to volunteer the use of the facility to store these items, and I would in particular thank Emily Tataro, Maria Demler, and Danielle Laporta, for their leadership and their hard work, among all of the other volunteers in our community who have worked very hard to help those in need. In addition, there are presently cleaning supplies available for those who need them at the DPW. Any resident needs a cleaning supply kit, all the resident needs to do is go to the DPW and pick one up, so, and we are encouraging people to do that. FEMA did send a multiple unit here about a week or so ago, and was able to help a lot of residents apply for financial need and assistance. And FEMA continues to be available for those in need who wish to apply as well. This is an ongoing process. We thank you for your partnership, and once again, the borough offers our partnership to you, where and when we can provide assistance to the districts and to the schools. Looking ahead as well as to what's happening presently in events, as Ms. Shanley, as you indicated earlier, the cereal box challenge is underway, and we couldn't be more excited to have so many schools participating, encouraging children to donate healthier choice food options, particularly cereals, and both raise awareness of the need for food, but also in addition to how a fun, competitive event. And the cereal box challenge is just one small component of the overall Bergen County Food Security Task Force, so very much appreciative, thank you. Ms. Shanley and I had an opportunity yesterday, along with the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office, to have a Zoom conference call and discuss this year's 30 annual domestic violence opposing, which will be once again here at the Milford High School on Wednesday, October 27th, in the evening. And once again, I couldn't be more grateful for your partnership and your assistance and being the one Milford that we are. And the details are still being ironed out in terms of this year's particular theme, but it will continue to be the effect that the COVID pandemic has had on the use of domestic violence, on the increased lethality that it has had, more specifically by forcing individuals who are in abusive relationships to either remain in those relationships or sometimes return back to abusive and very dangerous situation. That's one of our, going to be one of our continued focuses of this and both. In addition, we're also going to be, through a series of panelists and experts, discussing and addressing the mental health and emotional components to it. Again, to be more specific in particular, to raise awareness about how to identify those people that we know and we care and we love who are in abusive relationships. It's not always an easy thing to identify, so this is going to be a challenge that this year's panel will be addressing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So I know, Mr. Seymour, you were invited Friday morning. I know you are a busy man, but both Berkeley and Gibbs' will be celebrating their cereal challenges in the buildings on Friday morning. We will be there, and we will take pictures in the event that you can't make yet.
Thank you very much. I will definitely attend, and I also want to stress that we value more than anything the partnership we have with the district and with the board, so thank you. And as I said at the last meeting, any way that we can help you, please let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour, and we value the partnership as well. Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Seymour? Thank you very much. Do we have any additional board items? Old business? New business?
I have something to move down.
Oh, oh, oh. Wait, is it old or new page?
I think it was, I just got to make sure.
Come on, I want to keep these meetings going.
No, it's new, sort of.
It's really free.
All right, whichever one.
It's really silly. Do we have a revised board contact list? What have you found about that?
I'm glad you brought that up.
Actually, that room is updated.
In the drive? Is it in the drive?
It was updated?
Okay. I have to look for it.
Okay, good.
Oh, you're making me work. Hi.
Don't you hate that?
It's in the drive. It's in the drive. Can, can somebody?
It's like you're on mute. It's like, oh, bad.
Yeah.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
It's in the drive, and I emailed it to you.
Would be the third one.
I wish I could have said that.
I think it's probably under BOA miscellaneous info.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But has it?
Says September.
Oh, cool.
Now you would know, because she's on it.
There we go.
Is it still set?
Yeah. All right, there we go.
It's on my computer.
Oh, and now I'm, now I got myself off.
I was new this.
So.
Okay.
Yes, and now she's. Okay. Can I get a motion to open to the public for items not listed on the agenda, please? Motion advised, having Kaminsky, seconded by Nicole Dunn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. As outlined in the Milford Board of Education bylaw 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Do we have anyone from the public? Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Little page 136, Plinham. Like Danielle said earlier, the N B A, on behalf of the N B A, Patty Adriens and I did put together, we were able to put together care packages with some groceries in it for the flood victims, and we put 75 bags together, and ShopRite was so cooperative, easy to work with. The bus driver ladies came over, and they're the ones that coordinated it over to the middle school for us, and then we did grab a few night care students who were more than happy to come in and help us put the bags together, and we brought it over to the Elks, and actually, it was overwhelming going into the Elks and seeing what those ladies had done and what they were doing at the time. They were just, the place was filled, and they were organizing, and so it was really pretty incredible to see everything that was being done. So hopefully, you know, it helped out a lot of the families there.
Thank you, Mrs. L. Paige. Yes, but I just want to say, thank you very much, and thank the teachers. It's a wonderful community that we have, and great for getting the kids involved, because our school has always taught the students about giving back, so it's good that you're continuing that. Thank you very much, on behalf of the board. Paige?
I'll ask you the question, if it's something. The night care program, because Mrs. L. Paige brought it up, I was just wondering how it's going, because again, it's another thing that we hadn't had, and now we're back in the swing, and I'm pretty sure there's a lot of parents that are very grateful. So it's my understanding that the program is going very well from the updates that I've received from you now, and so, so well that they, they do have short waiting lists for additional enrollment in October, that, you know, they're trying to get things established and then move on to the next group, but I, to my understanding, that things are going very well. Thank you. We have many of the same organizers in place, and so that helps.
Thank you. We should actually close to public. That's board member request, but that was a good question.
Sorry.
But is there any other public comment? All right. Can I get a motion to close to the public? Motion by Tammy Steele, seconded by Laura O'Grady. All in favor? Could you call it?
Tammy Steele.
Tammy Steele. Tammy Kaminsky. You can have it anywhere, and Joe is not married.
Joe is like, one's enough. Wow.
I don't have enough of my plate.
Okay. Motion by Tammy Kaminsky. I noticed Stephanie did have a. She doesn't know what she's doing by now. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Now Paige had a board member request, thank you very much. Were there any other board member requests for additional information? Yes, Mr. Albro?
Having heard the enrollment report, I would be curious to know how many of our eighth graders last year are in our ninth grade this year.
I can get back to you with that. Any other board member requests? In that case, I would like to seek a motion to adjourn. Motion by Tammy Kaminsky, seconded by Paige Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. And I apologize. Don't worry about it. One of you.[1773.82]